All right, we're here for a session. We're going to talk about some things in the legislature items with the county councilor, or county attorney, sorry. With that, I invited Jay Hall, who's representative of KAC, who's the legal team for that. Come now, I'm ready to sit in and answer some questions for us. We have Jack, and Representative Jack is calling Wood. And with that, I think we can start in this. Firstly, I'll ask, if we're going to talk about this, we're going to be able to, we cannot talk about names of personnel, because this is not about personnel, it's about policy, it's about project. So, one of the emails I sent to Jack was, "If we go over the budget, are we required to fund this? And so, how do we accomplish this? And please support me with documentation, or please send me the documentation to support this." So that will be our first question. If we go over the budget, are we required to fund? And then if so, how do we accomplish this?
Commissioners, I'm going to give you some books that we put together. County Councilor already has a copy of the things that I've sent to you earlier. I'll give you mine just a favor today.
Fred, Commissioner, Jay, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, yeah, right. You've got an excellent offer.
No, that's all different. Sorry. That work goes. In fact, maybe Jay would like to come up here, too. Uh, Jay, you want to come on this way?
Uh, I'm sure Jay can.
So what I've put together for you are the Attorney General opinions that are representative, there aren't all of them, but they are representative of what we spoke about earlier, as to the responsibilities and the authorities of the commission, and then of the other elected officials. And so I've broken it down for you into three areas. The first is general, the blue area, and I put some main takeaways at the beginning, just so you have a general idea of what's going to be discussed by the Kansas Supreme Court, and then the Attorney General, both, I believe there's one Attorney General opinion prior to the Supreme Court case called Nylander, and then there's a number of cases, Attorney General opinions after Nylander. Nylander's in 2003, I think. And so, if you'd like to start, and then I threw a couple extra things in for you, just for, to help you in the future, there's a couple of county Attorney General opinions that you might be interested in on a couple of other topics. So, the main takeaways, as we talked last week, and Commissioner Krueger was not here, on the first page, main takeaway is that Kansas County elected officials are equal equals. Elected officials answer to the voters, not to each other. Each elected official has their own statutory duties, responsibilities, and authority. County commissioners are the stewards of tax levies, but are also legally responsible to reasonably fund county services. When providing their designated county services, other elected officials are charged with the proper use of county funds provided to their offices by the Board of County Commissioners. To prevent micromanaging of other elected officials, state law has, for almost forty years, intentionally divided between the Board of County Commissioners and other elected officials, the planning and use of the annual county budget. The general process is, first, and this is somewhat in time, working together with the Board and elected officials to determine future annual and rollover budgets necessary for each public service. Second, the budget is officially approved by the Board, and sufficient revenue is raised through tax and non-tax sources. Third, each elected official's office provides a county service by exclusively spending the office's budget. And fourth, any time a budget is predicted to be exceeded, the elected official and the Board work together to determine whether the expected overage is due to a statutory requirement, which you're required to fund, or will be a discretionary purchase that is not required to be funded. The practical difficulty is that budget issues tend to arise late in a budget year requiring the Board to have in place planned idle rainy day funds. Sometimes, and number three, sometimes differing public policies and visions of elected officials come into conflict within a courthouse. Because state law gives no one official or body complete authority over the annual budget process, it is reasonable for the public to expect that elected county officials will stay in their own lane of responsibilities and find compromise concerning any disputes. It is expensive, it's unusual, time-consuming, and politically embarrassing for all involved to unnecessarily take a policy dispute to the district court in a mandamus action. A mandamus action is a court order telling a public official or a public body to do their job and holding them in contempt for their refusal. Number four, because of state law and their professional ethical duties, county and district attorneys are not bound at all by a county's personnel policies and procedures, or the county's pay plan. A county and district attorney chooses his or her employees, sets their salaries, and may spend his or her budget as he or she sees fit. And that's almost a direct quote out of an Attorney General's opinion that's in the book. Number five, elected officials other than county or district attorneys may hire, fire, I'm sorry, hire, promote, demote, and dismiss their own employees. Their employees, but not the elected official, are subject to lawful countywide policies and procedures, so long as those policies and procedures do not target a particular employee, department, or elected official, and so long as such policies and procedures do not interfere with the particular elected official's statutory duties. The next page is the Nylander case, that's the seminal case in Kansas by the Kansas Supreme Court.
Just one of the boroughs in Lincoln County.
Lincoln County, yes. I'm sorry, I call it Nylander, sorry. In fact, you're right, because the Board is who sued the sheriff for the action, and they lost. So I've given you a copy of that, and I think I may have, in the three commissioners, you may have some highlighting that the other books don't. The second tab, second blue, one, two, third blue tab, is an Attorney General's opinion 94-115, that talks about reasonable budgets, shared discretion between the Board and the elected official, and the requirement of compromise. The next tab is an Attorney General's opinion 99-29, that talks about line item budgets, that the electeds are not held to a line item budget, they're held to their overall general fund budget, meaning that they can move the money around if they need to. The next tab is for your benefit, the next two blue tabs are for your benefit for the future. Attorney General 2017-7 talks about nepotism, and whether or not a countywide nepotism policy affects elected officials, it does not. Not that that's an issue now, but it almost always comes up. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in blue tabs.
Yeah.
If it is 2017-7.
I think you have, I think you have 2016.
Oh, they turned it around, they moved before 2017.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yours are not.
One has 2016-16.
Yeah, okay, my fault. So, one is nepotism, the other is drug testing, and I'm aware, I think you're looking at drug testing. I believe the sheriff said something to me about.
I think the drug testing part of it was in the ones that have CFTs.
Okay.
Well, I call that the positions that had. The sheriff's part's going to be there.
And I'm working with Caitlin on that, and there's another section in the handbook that says all, it contradicts, so we're, that's something that needs to be discussed.
The policy work that we used was in accordance to what KAC sent out.
Okay, I just passed it on, because I knew it was, it could be an issue for you, and it's not as simple as it looks, so I thought I'd provide that to you. Nothing here is as simple as it looks.
And when they tell us, you're all up and see.
The red section is the county attorney section. Now, I've given you the state law, and if you'll notice, I believe it should be highlighted that the county attorney, within the limits of the sums made available by the Board of County Commissioners, each such deputy and assistant shall receive an annual salary in the amount prescribed by the county attorney. And then, the first tab after that is Attorney General Opinion 92-158, which the county attorney law has not changed very much over the last few years, many years. And 92-158 simply says the exact same thing. The county attorney runs his or her office, hires who he or she wants to hire, and pays them what they, what he or she wants to pay, within the budget set by the county commissioner. And then the last red tab is recent Attorney General Opinion 19-1, and it has to, it's directed at district attorneys, but the idea is the same. And then lastly, because I represent also Sheriff's Association, and so I'm aware that sometimes sheriffs have the same issues, I've given you a section on a sheriff, and the first tab is the state law. The sheriff may appoint, promote, demote, and dismiss additional deputies and assistants as necessary to carry out the duties of his office. So, I've given you two, there are quite a few more on this particular topic, and they almost all flow from the Lincoln County, Nylander case, but I've given you two Attorney General Opinions, 0315 and 0413, and that's exactly what they say, that he runs his own office, or she runs her own office, hires, fires, demotes, as they see fit. Then in address, Commissioner Bailey's question as to if the county attorney exceeds the budget, what if he do? I think it's probably, as a practical matter, too early in the budget year to know that, but assuming county attorney is going to exceed, then the county, Board of County Commissioners, you can think of it as things necessary for the office, thus required because of statutory duty, and discretionary items that can be put off and not affect a statutory duty. And so, if it's the first, and it's necessary to run the office, then probably the general fund's the one that's going to have to pay it, but it'll have to be paid. I'll give you an example of that. I live in a county not much bigger than Osage, and I'm sheriff's legal counsel, and we had, four weeks ago, we had a prisoner get somehow another a bar in the shower out of a concrete wall, and beat another prisoner, put him in the hospital under 24-hour guard, overtime, so the sheriff's had to pay eight days of 24/7 hospital guards. We just got the first bill, thought the prisoner was going to die, he didn't. His first bill for the hospital alone is $398,910.23. So, the bill would be a little smaller than that, because it has to go through a Medicare process, state law requires Medicare process, less than that, but the entire, that sheriff's entire healthcare for the entire year is less than $200,000, and this one is $400,000.
And I can see that, we got the Taylor trial happening here, we can't plan for a verdict, so.
Right, exactly, that's my point.
But in this bill, what we're going to talk about in this budget, is the budget of last year was $172,920. The county commissioners approved a budget of $233,073 for this year, which is an increase of $60,153. And we maintain that, and I understand what you're saying, is how do you know when you're going to budget? Well, I can tell you this, if you give a budget at the first of the year, and I know it's a year-long budget, and I can figure my payroll, if my payroll goes $230,000, I'm not staying in the budget. So, how do you just, I mean, I'll give you another example, let's say I'm Jack, I say, good Jack, I want to hire six people, I want to pay them $100 an hour, I'm going to go over the budget. And guess what, statutorily, I have to have somebody that works, so how does a county protect, a county attorney from going way over the budget, which in this case, the $233, already $60,000 higher, how do you protect yourself so that doesn't happen? You're saying that we can't, you're saying it's just automatic, they can go beyond the budget.
Well, I've been around government, this is my 49th year in government, so I've seen government go, but it's been my experience, not an Osage county, but my experience, that some electeds go over their budget, some go under their budget, and it all evens out, but y'all have the tough job of making sure there's enough money for, to run the county, whatever that is.
I agree.
And, and I'm not saying it's easy, and we have divided government. It's the same in, under, state, state runs the same way, the legislature doesn't tell the Attorney General what to do, the Attorney General doesn't tell the government what to do, and yet they still have to fund reasonable budgets for those people.
And I don't want to tell them what to do, I just want to say, here's the budget. And I can look at budgets in the past, and I can look at staffing in the past, and now we have one, two, three, four, five, six, they've done as well as three, so I don't think it's, the commissioners have funded this department fully. I think it's because we're hiring, and again, in your case, you said they can hire who they want. So we have now, we have one, two, three legal assistants, and an assistant county attorney, and a county attorney. We've never had that ever close to that in the past. And we talked about this when we hired the assistant county attorney, is we will help do that by taking money out of these other funds, which are those commodities and, and the other expenses from those old contractual sources. So it's already went there, and that's how we got until where we can have the assistant county attorney. Now we're talking about putting in another legal assistant that's going to be the hire rate, yeah. And we're expecting to say, yeah, we're going to do that, because he has that big job.
I believe the county attorney said the other day that because of hiring some others at a lesser rate, that he does not expect to exceed his budget, so I think it's.
Well, regardless of, instead of one, two.
Had a lesser rate than what they.
Right, but they still, and then the budget, the current budget, with the boy staff, the way that it is now, we're going to spend in the county attorney's office $257,884, which is $24,811 of the budget. If we, that's a, the proposed, if we go back to the other one, we're going to be $18,571 of the budget, unless some employee wasn't there, and that's my point, is if the budget is better, and I think we've fairly done the budget, my question is, what's changed that we can't do within that budget? And I understand cases have gone up and all that, but we've hired our assistant county attorney, we've done a lot of things, and kept it in that budget, and when we did the budget, we talked about that a lot, in trying to save the county taxpayers' money, because at the end of the day, that's who we owe, is anybody that pays taxes in this county. And I am one of those, and he is, and he is, and he is, and she is, and we're looking at that. So it's my job to protect that. That's why, and as a budgetary, we set a budget, we just asked, we followed that budget. I don't think we're asking too much, and I can go back to, another thing that may kick this up, is last January, $14,000 came on, this was before we came into the office, so this was one of the last commissioners. The discussion was made, and they approved raises, that the county attorney could pay for out of his diversion fund, to $216,015,600. But guess who pays for it now? Wait to figure that into the budget's going forward. It's no different now. If we keep doing this, this is just a way to sneak a budget, and build a budget up so high that it gets nutty. And I'm not so sure that we can use the diversionary funds, and maybe you can answer that question, whether you can use the diversion funds to pay wages.
Best practice is not to do that, because they're, they don't have a life cycle to them.
Right. And, I mean, in some stuff I looked up, it says that you're not supposed to benefit from the diversion funds, so one of the increases in that wage was, I don't know.
Well, that was as to the county attorney, him or herself cannot personally benefit.
Same.
The county attorney themselves cannot personally benefit from the fund, not, not an employee that's doing a job for the office, public benefits from that.
So if they receive a pay increase, that's definitely personal benefit.
No. Well, if, if you're paying the county attorney directly from that fund, that would be a personal benefit.
That's what was done, they did that, and paid that raise out of that fund for last year, and now we got a budget for it.
Okay, I, I don't know what happened then, that, I agree with you.
And I can show you, as I asked Ron to get into the office, I had one phone, but I went back, and I had it submitted, and I went back to the tape, and I went back to the motion, and it was said that the raises would be paid for out of the diversion fund, and part of that, it's left to vote. Well, now just send those to me. Do you know, or do you?
I don't know what you're talking about, I mean, as far as the tape.
Yeah, there are. So, January 4th, Jack off, went from, since he's public, I'll try to say this one, went from $33.40 to $35.40, so two dollar acres paid for out of the diversion fund. I would say the other ones, however, they were increased by a dollar on one, $2.25, $2.25. So we went $7.50 in increase wages, so another $15,600 that we have to figure out, our budget for this year, including that.
From the general fund, not again from the.
No, those dollars there were paid for out of the diversion.
Well, Commissioner, I think if it ran through the county commission, I think that probably is a step away from what the statute had in mind. I've not researched that, I don't know. I, I'm aware of the statutes you're talking about, but I, I have no background in that statute. Be glad to look at it and tell you.
You know, that's what I'm saying, I think we may have a little more issues, that maybe that's why the funding is going to happen. And then, according to what you just said, and I'll go back from that page, is that we don't have, Jack is one of the few, the attorney's office and sheriff's office has their own payrolls, and they submit that to the county, which the sheriff has his payroll, pay credit in place. The county attorney drives anyone. The other elected offices that are here all have started wages and whatever. So with that, I don't know, based on what you're telling me there, that we don't control the wages in there yet, is that correct?
You don't control wages.
So therefore.
Now, Commissioner, don't, please don't put words on my mouth.
I do.
Your control ends once you've set a budget, until such time as that elected official exceeds the budget.
So what's the discrepancy here? I was gone last week, but is the discrepancy, there's a certain pay wage that's requested, that's above what is being set?
My understanding is, it went from, correct me, 18 to 21, 50.
22.
22.
So if that were to be approved.
It's, it's not a subject of vote.
Has it been figured in within the budget? So when you came up with the calculation of the wage, did you put that in your budget and see if it fit within the budget that was approved?
I came up with that wage because I needed to hire someone for that position, and has the going rate for that position.
Well, I say actually, did you, did you consider the budget, do a calculations and see if it was in the budget?
No.
So that's where I get confused. If we don't have authority over the final budget, then why would people need to come to us at all for anything? If he can just go above me on it and have to pay it, then why do they come to us at wages season, and why do they come to us to pay plan if they don't have a charge?
Well, it's, it's a process at the beginning to determine the annual budget, that's between you and the elected. You have final authority over that budget to set that amount, and then the county official, the elected official spends that money. If, for some reason, that elected official goes over their budget that year, they have to come back for a supplement.
And we can and cannot, we can deny it?
You can deny it if it's a discretionary amount, if it goes to their statutory duty, you run their office, you are required to pay fees.
But the discretionary part is, if we look at the number of employees, there's already one, two, three, again, I think the argument that would come from that. The rest of it, and there's another part of this argument I didn't think about until this, when this came, is we can't, we can't tell that, that he asked to give at least we can not raise, that we must do an approval, but within our first.
He answers to the voters, as you do, it's the public policy behind it.
So we would have to go back and change that motion, if he wants to make that motion himself, we don't, we can't do that for him.
To, for a vote?
We had, well, we put in that we were going to increase the pay by the county lawyers, and all of that, we can't do that. Well, the sheriff put together this, so I'm not going to hit that. In this one, we can't do that, because we don't.
Elected officials can agree to whatever, they can consent to accounting what a policy they want to.
But I can't say, well, it's all or none, you can't pick and choose what he wants to. That's my point, is I don't care if he brings it back in and asks it for it, because I'm just saying that we can't approve the raise without, which he's got us for.
So he can set whatever wage he wants on any of the ones? Who sets his wage?
You do.
So we can lower his wage, we can lower the.
That's what we want to do, the budget.
Well, okay, yes, that's the politics side of it, as long as it doesn't come out in retaliation.
And if what, then this makes for a budget.
I mean, you would, you would want to then lower the wage, well, if you target one department, and you have a history of other departments going over the budget, but you only lowered the wage of one elected official, when you should probably do all. Well, I don't know what the past is.
Maybe something one I don't even know.
Right, well, but the county's bound by the way, whether it's.
And that's why I said, we tried our best, and that's why it took so long to get the budget done, and we gave $60,000 more to his budget than what he had. I don't think we've done anything bad, and if, I don't know, I mean, I get that, but when I look at the numbers, again, the office had three people, the office had four people, now we're looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, and maybe it's down to five, but there's been times where the four is always thinking, and so we added an assistant county attorney, which would be another, I mean, basically, you've got four legal assistants, is that not correct?
I have three legal assistants. I have no idea when you said there used to only be three.
Okay, I'm using the assistant attorney term, so I may have heard one.
She's an assistant county attorney, she's not a legal assistant.
All right, so then you.
She's needed to prosecute the volume of cases, as we discussed when I brought it before you, when you approved her.
Which was why we were going to take some from commodities. Which is why we were going to take some from commodities, which was your modus operandi. But now you're playing the game, and now we have.
I'm not playing the game, Jim.
And that's all, yes, you are, because here's the bottom line, we grew from a position that somebody was making eighteen dollar, they were paying twenty-two fifty.
It was scheduled to be nineteen fifty an hour, because of your raise.
Because we can't do those raises, and what's stopped up from it? But in retaliation to somebody that hired your employee, you go pay somebody more money for that same position, and have that office to take more than them. And I agree with.
In retaliation, what are you talking about?
You know what I'm talking about?
There is no retaliation for hiring this person. Do you want me to show you her resume, which I've already done, to show that she's qualified?
Did you, did you interview these people?
No, because they don't meet the qualifications for what I need in that office. And if you want to decide who to hire, go to law school and run for county attorney.
I don't want to do that part. Well, I want you to do a state of the budget that's sixty thousand.
And you approved going over that budget and approving hiring the assistant county attorney?
He just spoke out of it. We already knew those numbers, because we was working, so we already had that in there. Our budget didn't get finalized till late this year. I don't, I don't think this is the song.
Regardless, the assistant county attorney hired us by it. Why would he need to bring that position to us? He could have just hired her and then gone through this process and said, well, I did hire someone and now I need money to pay for it. Why did he bring that position to us if he didn't have to? Because you're saying he doesn't have to do that?
Well, there's a lot of elected officials that come and see the board of county commissioners on a regular basis, simply because they choose to do that. If, if your question, did he have to or not, as long as it was within his budget, he probably would not have had to.
So how would the county, and I'm not, when I say the county, I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about the taxpayers. How do they protect themselves against a county attorney's worship? No, wait a second, let me finish the story. Of doing in January, they got a nice big healthy budget, they can do whatever they want with it, and they're damn thing about it.
Because they're the elected official and can be voted out the next time. If they do something illegal, they can be removed. That's just as if the board didn't do what it should do, then it can be removed.
Then how?
I mean, it's, that's the political side of it.
Why don't the elected officials have their own money? Why don't they just set their own money? If they're, if they're ultimately in control over their spending, and we don't have any authority over their spending, then why don't they set their own money?
Because that's the way it's divided. That's your lane, providing the public service is their lane. And.
But they don't understand their lane at some point, they just.
Well, no, they have to stay in their lane of providing the public service with the money that you provide to them. And that has to be a reasonable amount. Some, some years we're, we get that done, some years we don't. I mean, that's, that's the practical side of running county government.
I think we're going to work for over sixty thousand dollars. I mean, and.
I don't, I don't live in Osage County, y'all have to decide that. But we just tell you what the law is.
There's some issue that, and people, I don't know, I mean, I'm not going to hurt anyone. When the taxpayers of the county have to fund it, and somebody that's doing the budget isn't a taxpayer of the county, they don't care. I happen to care, because not only, I'm a big time taxpayer and a lot of them cares, and I do care. And I think that's more important than anything else we talk about, is making sure that when we do budgets, that we're accountable, she's accountable, he's accountable, and any other elected officials accountable to the budget they have. And Ron, she's a budget, they go over that budget, then yeah, you've got to ask for that. And that's what we, if we willingly know that this is going to go above the budget, the only way it can go above the budget is if you change something. Then that's where the question comes up, so what do you change? How, maybe that's a question I'd like to ask Jay, maybe you've heard all those conversations, how do we fund this if we know that it's pulling over the budget?
Well, I, I think the question here is, and I'm, I'm looking at Attorney General opinion ninety-two dash one fifty-eight. And I'm looking at the fourth page here.
Those are the right pages?
Yeah, this is one of the right pages. It, it talks about, the, the county commission has the authority to set the county attorney's budget. However, once the county, once the budget is set, the county attorney has the authority to hire or fire as he or she sees fit, as long as such a measure does not go beyond the budget a lot. So I, I think you're correct, that as long as they stay within the budget, he doesn't have to ask. I think the issue is that we're here on May the second, and if we put these salary ranges in, then necessarily we will exceed the budget by October or November, or whenever that, whenever that date is.
And then you shut the office down?
Well, and, and at that point, you can't shut the office down. So do we, do we approve a number in May that we know will leave us short in November or October, or whenever that date is?
The, the problem becomes timing. It's, it's not their vote at this point, he's not over his budget. So there's not a vote on a particular hire.
Right.
They can't say no, they can't say yes, they don't have any thought.
But it is definitely a budget.
I think that's the variation.
And that's, that's where my struggle is, if he's, if he wants to pay twenty-two and he's in his budget all year, fine. But it's going to come to a point, and then what? Now he's put us.
We're totally wage that we can change, as the county attorney's wage to get that up. And that's not a title for, that's just a fact, so we want a budget, where can you change it from? You're going one way, but we have a toll.
But oh, but we're accountable to the taxpayers, right?
As is he.
I'm an advocate of the taxpayers, so we work really hard to get a budget. And so we all need to work together on a team to stay within our budget.
Yes.
So just because he has enough money right now, but we know he's going to run out, he's kind of like, I don't care.
I.
Well, that, that's, that's not a team mentality here. And then we get blamed for his budget going over because we're going to sign off on it.
No, you, you don't sign off. There's not a vote ready to happen in front of county commissioners.
When he runs over, we don't have to. When he runs over, we don't have to approve.
No, that's a different time and a different question. Because, well, we, we are predicting that they are going to go.
How do you only?
It may be that he loses an employee between now and the end of the year, can't replace them, and he stays under budget. And yet you have taken action against his budget earlier in the year.
You took it in this situation.
I think it's a little early.
So is that a commandment or a mandate? That we're going to lose the staff members to keep this under budget?
No, that isn't what I meant. Many things happen through a budget year that are unpredictable. And that's why you carry extra money in the funds so that you can continue to provide those public services when things go wrong.
You're talking about two different contexts. So you're talking about context, one, he has the money, so therefore he should spend it if he has the authority. The context two is coming in the fall.
Possible.
Didn't you do the calculation? Am I missing something on that?
It's going to be over.
So it's going to happen.
Unless.
No, unless, unless, unless he resigns and, and someone else comes in and hires new staff at ten dollars an hour. That can all happen, that can all happen.
Situation that we're going to be wearing, right?
And that may well.
What happens with that?
That may well happen, if you get to that point, and his budget's going to be short, and it is shutting down the office, the statutory duties that he has. Then you have to pay it, yes.
So then my question comes.
And he is answerable to the voters' justice.
Why would the counties, why would we, as the commissioners, ask that budget to fix all of that, we just go ten month with it? And then that can't, couldn't happen where you can say, hey, I got this week deal with the budget, I can do what I want here. I don't care if it run out of management, statute law, they got to pick one.
I don't think the county.
I don't think they do, I'm just saying.
I don't think you can get out of the state law.
But when, as an individual, you're not without checking accounts. If you want to go, if you budget that you want to buy a Cadillac, and you get to Junior and he said, hey, I'd like to have it, but I couldn't work the rest of the year. It's okay to go and do that, because it's our money, we can do that. We can choose not to eat for those next six months. But as a taxpayer, they don't get that totally, and they can't have an election, it must be a month, a yearly election, which that's not happening. I mean, there's all kinds of things here that, the, the part that bothers me is when somebody tells me, and I, I will work with anybody, I offered work with them, given on this. And I said, listen, this, it can't come that it says, hey, you don't have a choice, we can do, I can do whatever I want. And that's the problem I have, is I don't think that's right. Maybe it's, maybe legally, from your perspective, what I hear you saying, maybe there's a legal standard, but the common sense and ethics of me says I couldn't do that. I just don't think that adds up. And I, that's my point, is if you have a budget and you know what it is, and you know you're going to go over it, then why are you pushing this other than, I can't?
I, I don't think that's what's going on here, Commissioner. I, I don't know all of the politics within the county, it's none of my business. I can only tell you that this is the way it's been for more than forty years in Kansas. And it is an intentional legislative action. They could change this anytime they wanted.
And it sounds like.
The board of county, uh, I'm sorry, commissioners, they're, it, right after the Nylander, the Lincoln County case came out, the Board of, Association of Kansas Counties produced a white paper that's probably thirty or forty pages long, contesting this, asking the legislature to change it. That was in two thousand five or two thousand six. Legislature doesn't want to change it, they like divided go.
I don't have a problem with that, so there's a budget, so. So at the end of the year, if he's not in his budget, are you going to make the commitment, are you going to pay whatever's over a budget out of that diversion fund?
I'd have to give some thought to that.
I mean, to me, that's, I, I don't see where we go, because I can't, first thing I think we can't do is, I don't think we can do the raises that we talked about with the county. I don't think they're, they're far enough, we can't do it. I mean, that's basically what he says, we don't set the pay, we don't do the hiring, we don't do any of that. So we can't go and change somebody's pay up or down.
I just, it's not that easy, it's two different contexts, you're taking a situation, putting it in two different contexts.
Who's?
This situation, it just doesn't make sense that if he raises it right now, yes, he has the money. But the second context is, he will be over budget.
Absolutely.
So.
That's just nonsense.
That just, that contradicts the whole thing, that we actually have a colonial budget. Because wouldn't, next year, he could pay it all thirty dollars an hour and do the same thing?
So we know last year that it was twelve thousand two hundred and sixty dollars over the, so we increased it a lot of time.
And he did not increase all of that, nor all of the additional.
That you're not paying.
Right. So calling Graham, your, what you were talking about, we're going to merge this in the last.
Dollar fifteen an hour difference than what we got to be making, that you've been here to watch from nineteen fifty to twenty-two fifty sometime next season.
So then why would he want to share it?
I, that's, right. Because the Spanish, the Spanish assistant county attorney. That's, 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 Commissioner, he, he has replaced, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. He's replaced two assistants at less money. And that, those hourly wages are sufficient to now pay this third position a higher wage.
That's not true, because what happened was, that happened last year with the diversion fund, not going to pay those raises. But in reality, the schedule was, and I'm not going to name names, but it was fourteen seventy-five an hour, fourteen dollars an hour. And currently, we're paying fourteen fifty, fourteen dollars an hour. So as you can see, there's about.
But those are approved, that was all approved, right?
Yeah, I pay for them, you said he can go on.
Well, no, it, it's the budget that you approved.
Correct, so let me.
That's been approved, right?
Yeah, but the wages were that way. The raises changed when he agreed to pay out the diversion funds and pay those increases. Then on top of that, we added an assistant county attorney, at forty thousand. We've added to his wages, or however that happened, but anyway, those are all in it. So the wage that was paid as a, uh, uh, legal assistant, we've far exceeded in one by hiring an assistant county attorney, and I get their different positions. But we still, if you take the two wages there, we've still created an additional position, and we did that with a sixty thousand dollar budget.
But.
So now.
But you approved it, that's all been approved, so in essence, his budget is larger.
His budget is more than this right now.
You've approved it. So the only, the only question before us today is whether he can hire the person he wants to hire. And second, pay a couple of dollars more an hour than what the other one is. And whether or not that can be absorbed into his budget or not. I mean, if you add all these other things, he, of course, he's going to go over his original budget, but you've approved all of that.
Because it was already down in these numbers, that, the two thirty-three didn't just get monkey pulled out of air, we increased it sixty thousand dollars.
I know that you, you approved it. You approved it. Now, now we want to bring up all of this in the past, to say that you're going to exceed that budget, even though we've already approved it.
He's approved the two thirty-three, I think is what he said.
Yes, the two thirty-three is.
And so as long as the county attorney stays under two thirty-three, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any question that that would be.
And the county attorney, the new assistant county attorney is in the two thirty-three.
Yes, we did that at budget.
Okay, I, I misunderstood what you said.
So the reason we have, that's why we increased the budget, because last year, he was twelve thousand dollars on credit, so we want the budgets to be as close as possible. So this is, that's, so everybody knows where they're at, because it's, you're exactly right, in my opinion, it's his choice. It's just like it's his choice and it's my choice who I hire. So if I have to hire somebody and pay them this rate, and I don't have the money, I got a choice to make. So do I need that person to order seven, three of these? Do I hire two of these and take care of the other ones? I mean, that's your decision, that's not mine, that's crazy, however you feel, but as long as it's within that budget. And we had this talk, I may look, John, I'm again, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do right now. And sometimes, it's not all about the dollars, but you still have, I have a budget, I mean, I can't just allow fools to spend it. I mean, I told somebody, come in here, I'll guarantee forty hours, we can pay fifty dollars an hour. I'd probably have to canic in two, and three, and four, and five, but they don't be standing around looking at each other, but I still be paying.
What we, what I need to see, is I need to see what's been spent in his office up to date. And then if you take the rate that the position should be at, and finish it out for the year, and then take the rate that he would like to add it to, and finish it out for the year, and everything, and see where we're at with this two thirty-three.
I'm curious, when you say what the rate should be at, what are you talking about?
I don't know what is, I mean, all right, look, in my, the way I did it figured it, is I took it based at the current rate that was being paid. And then I also did adding the dollar fifty that we talked about with the county.
And you already took into account what we spent this year since.
I got everything on here.
He wants to come out to you.
Right there.
Okay, and that each.
There's a six thousand dollar increase, so either way, we're trying to maybe go over the budget.
But not only that, that's for wages.
That's just for wages. But he's already agreed that he was going to cut back on his contractual services and commodities, that was part of all of it.
That's what I'm saying, is that he's already, his whole budget would be however much over just for personnel, and that means he has no money at all for contractual services and commodities.
Here's a number where you can do it, but just, the whole here, there's with the new, and there's a couple, so you see there's, I've already spent, uh, along that.
But I don't know what these are current, she told me these were.
No, but the contractual, we've bought, so we know that they're over that way, because it's four thousand, five thousand bucks now, right, see, they're over.
My concern is that he didn't consider the budget when he was in here an hour and a half each. I mean, I could, I was not here last week, but when this was brought, I would have thought he would have brought the budget, kind of showed the breakdown, threw you can't care numbers, and included the budget with it.
Yeah, I mean, again, that'll point us all over, I mean, we looked at everything, as I told everybody, when we did the pay things and what's on that. It's evident that he controls his own, because it's done that way, that it's outside of the figure of anybody else in the county. We have deputies in these offices who make it less than what his new and higher legal system is. So I did all of that, but it still comes down to the budget. I don't think we can just disregard the budget anytime they see that.
I, I do have a question. Is the county attorney's budget this year the only budget that's ever gone over? And, and how did we handle those?
Uh, well, I don't believe you, well, you want to talk about office here?
No, I just mean, as long as everyone's, all the electeds are being handled, handled the same way.
Yes, absolutely, that's, this is my first topic. We didn't have, I don't know.
Got you, okay.
We tried to make these, we tried to make these budgets very current, all right? all right, and. To give you an example, since you said the sheriff's department too, we raised his budget, or he requested a raise in his budget, uh, somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's in there, so if he goes above that, then I don't know, I mean, that's, that, I agree that he was underfunded, they fought his budgets, and I don't know why they did that.
I think in the past, that would have.
I don't think they've ever did that, we do.
Well, okay, I, I just.
So the sheriff's department was at, in two thousand eighteen, one point eight, this is the final monies they spent, and then two point one, two point one, two point zero. This year, their budget amount is two point seven million dollars, so seven hundred thousand dollar increase is what they have at us.
Are you, is he expecting to do something? Not, not that it's before.
I believe that, again, I believe he was underfunded, so we tried to pay that, so it was, we tried to.
Because I said, we looked at the last.
We got six, his one, six, again, I think we tried, what we're asking is, we did the work, and it took us a long time, and I think Fred can attest, and Matt can attest, this was not an easily done process, it took a long time to get this budget in place. We put our work into this, and I don't want to see our work go up in smoke just because somebody can play one of the department, that's the part I don't like about it.
Well, all the, it's not just the county attorney, all electeds have generally the same thought.
Absolutely, but we have.
Whether they wish to exercise that or not is wholly separate, but all I can do is give you some perspective in time, and in a hundred and four other counties, is some budgets go over, some go under, and it all comes out in the end, and those particular electeds that can't seem to understand budgets are voted out by the voters.
I'm not sure what the budget that we added to, and it may be that I should, it may change over half a year, get by for six months, and then you present your budget in June, presented with this additional rate, and, but we'd already increased it, we were out in the new position of, this is an attorney.
Well, the inability to hire a person that he felt he needed to hire, quality-wise, with the background-wise, was going to cost him X amount of money, and that decision that stayed all places that decision. I said I would assume not have to replace him, right? I didn't want to be in this position to begin.
So then next year, what if the person wants thirty dollars an hour, and then they say thirty, and then they don't have any money over that?
He's elect, every elected is elected by the voters to.
I will.
I, I, I just want.
I would tell every elected official, if you're an elected official, and you know what your budget is, you requested a budget, we gave it to you, you go over that, I don't care which one you are, we're going to ask, we're seeing money back somewhere. The only thing that we can tell them is the wages that we're going to post. So that's what we're going to do, as long as.
One of your duties is to fund the public services, and, and if the elected official, through no fault of their own, has to run over the, to be able to do their statutory duty, I, I think you would probably be responsible, well.
With that reason, and here's my.
And, and that's why you need time, years of, years of experience to understand how that actually works.
Right, and I understand hiring, I've been trying to hire a handful of people, I've been in hiring business for all my life, you don't always get to hire somebody in a couple of weeks, maybe it takes a month, maybe it takes two weeks, maybe it takes a week, I don't know, but you don't go that down in two, in two days, and think you've done everything, and save tax on a hundred, unless there's another reason.
That probably comes under the micromanaging we talked about the other day.
Yeah, micromanaging, the only thing I'm going to manage is the money, because that's the only thing that basically we don't, first thing is to, is first, if we open that, and when something's not that popular, that's my point, I guess, if we don't have any. You're saying we don't have any authority to do that, and that's.
I, I will take statutory duties, I will take a little, you're saying I didn't do it properly when I went through your representative in the H R department?
I didn't say anything about that, I said, there's ways of doing things differently.
You said properly.
Well, maybe I should have said differently.
I think you should.
To me, well, there's a lot of things you could have done, but I'm not going to slay a person aside, we don't have that conversation to do that in a different sort of way, but you have been given, the first grant was sixty thousand dollars more, we're not talking five thousand dollars, or two thousand, sixty thousand dollars, that is a forty percent increase over that before.
And I, and I asked for approval, and you granted it.
And you can't.
And then I have an unexpected situation in the middle of the year.
Well, you have more employees now, even with, if you didn't have, look, if there's one less employee, you have your own as well.
Okay, but you approved that so we can prosecute crime.
But you now want an additional staff.
I don't want an additional staff, I want the staff that you have approved, which is three support staff and an assistant county attorney. I'm not asking for additional staff, I don't know what you're even talking about.
I still think you have a right to say that.
I mean, I, I think that the, the question is, will the county attorney's budget stay at the number that was established for twenty twenty-two? That, that's the whole question. As long as it stays under that, he can hire whomever he wants, at whatever rate he wants. But the issue that we have to look at is that you're not hiring somebody for two or three days, this isn't something that's going to be, this person's only going to work from May to July or something like that, this is going to be through the rest of the year, so we have to ask ourselves, is the budget going to shake out in October and November and December, or are we going to be over? That's really the only, because if he's under budget, then yeah, he can hire that person, pay them whatever he wants to pay them. But if he, if he's at, if, if that pay is going to cause him to be at, instead of two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, it's going to cause him to be at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or two hundred and forty thousand dollars, well, then that's a different question, because as we see in the attorney general's opinion, the county attorney has the authority to hire whomever they want to hire, as long as they are within their budget. If he's within his budget, he is free to do whatever.
Whether during the year, do you make that determination, I guess? I mean, they, we could do this in February, and micromanage throughout the year.
But we can do, we can do the calculation and say, if this person is going to work forty hours a week.
But you don't know who's going to quit, come and go.
But we know.
Can you price a gasoline for, like, for the sheriff's office? Three dollars, hers is four dollars. Well, but these are all.
But we can, but we can calculate, we can calculate wages, and so we will know.
But that's speculation.
If we pay this person.
Isn't it?
No, it's not speculation, to, to say, I'm.
He's fully staffed now, he wasn't three weeks ago.
Right, if he's, but here's the thing, if he's fully staffed, if he's fully staffed, and we say, okay, you're fully staffed, you'll be at budget, then if you're fully staffed, but I increase everybody's wages, then I'm going to exceed budget, right? That's not theoretical, that's.
Well, and, and that may be, the problem is, eight months out, how do you know that's what's going to happen? That's not practical, that isn't the way government.
I can't assume that he won't be under budget if he.
Well, if that, if we use that determination, then the board gets to run things.
No.
The idea is, because they'll determine in Jan, on January fifteenth, this looks like you don't, you can't run your budget, so you come back and tell us every three days how much money you've spent, because we think you're going to go over.
No, that, that, I don't think that's the.
The electeds can't run it off.
No, the electeds should be able to run it off.
People, I, I, surely the county's lost, lost employees.
As long as he stays under his budget, he can do.
He hired two people to keep him in a lesser league, but maybe that is.
That's, well, a part of.
I said, whatever, as long as he hires, as long as he stays under, he can do whatever he sees fit.
I got to go. And then, okay, and, and then things happen through the years, okay? Not, nothing that you want to happen, but things happen through the year, good and bad, and we have to provide for that.
Certainly.
So that the public service continues, and we voted people into certain offices to handle those type of things. They've set their budget, he now is going to provide the public service with that budget, but sometimes if he runs under, they get it back into the garrison, if he runs over.
That I see that you're talking about, right, now, is that.
I'm, I'm not the legislature, but Commissioner.
This is why, somebody using common sense and not law sense, not, not to guess you guys, but using common sense, I know each year, I said, and I know what I can bottle within that budget, if I'm going to go over that budget, I got to figure out what I answer. I don't think taxpayers intend for us to just go say, hey, take it if you need it, we don't care, we don't need it anymore.
Commissioner, that's why I gave you that example of a four hundred thousand dollar unforeseen problem.
I agree with that, and this is not.
You have to, you have that money somewhere. You, now, whether, whether it's in his budget, or just what lies in a risk management budget, or, or whatever, things happen.
We're talking about a known cost that we have, that we, so the whole way it picks out is we didn't have to have a monthly budget on personnel, which, again, I don't think you do, but we set a budget so they know what's this, so I can tell you what it is, and knowing that the numbers are changing, that's, I guess they don't kick it over that, that's what it is.
And, and it may, what, I, I don't, I don't know, four months in, I can't tell you what his budget, or the sheriff's budget, or the commission's budget is.
Look, we protect the taxpayers.
That, he does too, he, he is statutory responsible to the taxpayer. Yes, you're equals.
Absolutely, and me equals, I have a budget, as a whole county, I have to stay within that budget. If they're allowed to do whatever they want, guess what that does in the county budget? It sends it over the top, and who do we go to?
Commissioners.
Who do we go to? That was my question, my question here is, was, how do we fund it? And show me the documentation to say we have to. What you're saying there is, everybody says it's within the budget.
With, no, within the budget, if it exceeds the budget, didn't say why, but if it exceeds the budget, then it comes down to your, your decision, if it's, if it supports the statutory requirements of the office, you have to fund it. If it's a discretionary matter, an unnecessary matter, I believe is what A G Stephen said, you do not have to fund it.
So, Pat, you're a county council, I was keeping you out of this longer. But, in your honest opinion, do you believe that it should be that we have to do that? I mean, we're talking now, you're not talking about today, forget about today, but let's hold a month from now, if I'm an elected official, my hair is all, I go to the law. But anything they go about, that is where you get yourself in trouble, I don't think anybody, I don't think that was the intent of any law, for any law enforcement, anybody in the legislature, whatever, and that's why I think this is dangerous now, I mean, you can help me if you take on a law, someone that's out of the. Well, I, I understand what you're saying, is that if everything proceeds as it is, it's, it's a certainty that it's not a budget, if it proceeds as it is now, you don't elect the sheriff.
Right.
But common sense will tell you that's what's happened, he's not changing, he said.
The other thing is, he said that the person leaving will run unforeseen circumstances, but people come and go in elected offices every day, so they can just say, oh, the boys last, it's a mountain, and they're pushing thirty dollars, just unforeseen, and they're going to have to do about it. Every elected office is just going to have unforeseen circumstances, every time.
First thing, well, I'm glad you're here, because we've got, I'm going to get you in here, and her, she would increase the wage, however, to do that, she never made one, made one too, that makes common sense, she's going to be in the bottom, that's not me telling her to do that, she figured out her budget, says if I do this, this work comes in, this is what says, here's the money. She's the only one who decided to do that, everyone else, this is what we want.
Because that pay range was quite a higher, and she wanted to have a higher pay range for herself.
I believe that was twenty dollars.
And so she combined positions, and, to get a, a higher qualification, that's all.
And I did go above that, I did check some areas around this, and I can say the county, they all seem to want to use against this, this frank account, they start at ten dollars an hour, then they give it twelve dollars an hour, and I believe, without bearing names, I think the one going to go on is nineteen dollars an hour, so we were on eighteen dollars an hour, so I understand that a little bit, and you got to have your, but, again, I don't think you just turn the first thing, so, I mean, that's my, again, this is my opinion, I agree.
But the other part is, he didn't consider what he, he didn't say that.
They didn't know it happened.
I said, did you look at your budget and consider what you have available? No, I didn't, well, that's, that's not fair to us, to taxpayers, anybody, you need a manager, but maybe he didn't consider it.
I don't want to speak for him, that, I, I've had other conversations with him, that that was not the takeaway I had, that he did, I, I, I know what he said, that was when there was smoke in the air, I think, Mr.
So.
But when, when I've had a cooler head conversation with him, that he, he had examined people leaving and how much they were making, and, and he, he did not pull that figure out of the air, that was a negotiated amount that it took to get the person he thought he needed.
We had that conversation there, and we knew that that made it on, but then, again, I have that, so if we're, outside here, we're not going to put some like.
I pass on what, what we.
Look, I, I just.
And again, I'm, I'm, I'm simply the legal messenger to you.
You're telling.
Whether it's a good idea or not, that's the politics, I would just, with the legal side.
When we don't sign off on it, they can have a good.
It, it has to be handled the same way any other hire would be handled, how any other hired, hiring would happen, whether, if you vote on every employee that's hired with the county, then it's your vote to, to make that, but if the electeds can simply hire someone, tell the county clerk, and it, it magically happens, then that's how this one has to happen.
The way we do it is it comes through, the process comes through.
Every, every hire.
And we have changed on a little bit, I have an H R person, and she gives the sheets, and she brings them all to us once, but they still, at the end of the day, they all come here, appear to be appropriate.
If, you just handle it the same way you would any other, but if, I, I will tell you that legally, you could not say no, I guess it's easier to do that, like, I guess you could vote no, but then a district judge is going to get into it, and that's unnecessary.
And I don't know if we have a choice, if we're having this discussion over, I think the, the bigger issue is not about this particular position, it's about, they're not, we've raised budgets, and we don't hold people down with those budgets, and we got a major problem, this opens a can of worms to our county, the taxpayers, unbeknownst to them, this has been happening for a long, long time, this is, it's just now kind of like because we're holding somebody's suite to the budget, and saying, hey, stay within the budget, not just any budget, but we're talking about a budget that's sixty thousand dollars higher than ours, and the other group that you represent, I think we already talked about it, it's seven hundred thousand dollars more, so just stay within the budget, and we don't have problems, I'm very excited, never have, but this is your budget, I mean, if the county was over budget, does anybody know what we have to do to get more on?
You'll fund ones.
Yeah, that's what I want.
They're, they're expensive, and that's a very detail, you don't want that, that's why you want cash, you want roll, roll over cash.
I understand that, but you want that roll over cash, if you make that business, and this is, if you really think about the business, this is a bad business decision, you can't do this, from my point.
Government's.
I guess.
You, you don't provide public service, it has to be provided, you can, you can determine whether or not you want to leave the lights on, county doesn't get to do that, they have to provide an ambulance or, or whatever.
I, I'm not disagreeing.
I'm not even disagreeing.
What I'm saying is, the part that I may disagree with, is when does the budget become a budget? And that seems to be like the, the conversation around, is when does the budget become budget? Does the budget become at the end of the year, or does the budget start at the start? If the argument is, the budget starts at the end of the year, then there isn't a budget.
Well, it, it, it is foreseen by the legislature that it starts at the first of the year, and, uh, things intervening, good and bad, throughout the year, and you have to be, you have to compensate for those things, good and bad, county clerk may not spend all of her budget, goes back into the garrison, she may run over, you're going to, and it's part of her statutory duties, you have to sign.
So using that as an argument, the sheriff was very helpful in his budget, he paid, and he told us this was going on, and he foreseen and put that in his budget, we also knew by going back and looking at the old records, that they were never funded correctly, which brings it back to the point, it doesn't go off years, so he's got a budget, he knows he has pretty close, now, could he plan on five dollars a year of gas? So that's something to have to consider. So that's something we're gonna have to consider, but that's his requirement of gas, that's not, county attorney doesn't have gas, so he's using it. The other ones, the road rental has gas, those are things we have to consider, so we have to look at everything on an individual basis, and again.
Well, county attorney, you said county attorney had a murder trial.
It changes, I agree.
Things happen.
Absolutely.
This isn't a murder trial, I mean, this is just a forty left, he's feeling conditioned, it's, I mean.
We talked about that, we've had that experience with Paul, or hell, I think it was so bad, are we not so bad for calling it out? Or stories. So it's a, it's, that's a gift that never goes away. Well, so I mean, there's stuff that you can't hear him, but again, the question is, is, is that an art funded adequately? And I believe when you look at a sixty thousand dollar increase in that budget, I think you adequately funded it and did something. And that's my, because I, I don't, I mean, I don't see the blue sheet here to come across, but I, I think we're headed, that we're gonna need some maybe a different harmony to help with this. I mean, I, we talked about it a little bit this morning in the very session. I don't think we're just gonna open up the purse strings and say, take out all you want, we'll figure it out, because then we got no cash, we're more than one. No, it don't. I mean, it's about accountability, and the accountability, as our co-equals, they're accountable also.
Correct, that's the whole idea.
But they can't lie behind the commissioners and say, we have to give it to them.
Well, that's the politics. I, I just say what statutes are the reality. That may well be.
That's a damn rule, if you are accountable for your budget, you put it together, you presume it got approved. Now, if somebody cut your budget or said they couldn't agree with it or whatever, you might have argued, when they write their budget and it's approved. Unless there's some very extenuating circumstances, I don't know how you can change it, there are circumstantial, murder trial, I mean, there's things that will change. But I don't, I think that's a dangerous step, and I would hope, they should go, that other hundred and four counties, I would hope they would look at that too, and start realizing that that's not a good deal for the tax bill.
Jay, Jay, right?
Yeah.
You hear this in other counties, correct?
I, I've not heard, I mean, there are questions all the time about how they interact and how they, how they develop a budget. But once that budget is developed, I mean, you have to know, okay, I have my budget for twelve months, if I've used fifty percent of my budget and it's the second of May, I know I'm in trouble. Because I look at the calendar, there's more than fifty percent of the calendar left.
Right.
So I, I think you have to, I mean, you can do whatever you want.
But who answers, who answers for them? Which elected official answers for them? Wouldn't the county attorney be the one that answers?
They have to answer for the overrun.
Doing their office?
They have to answer for the overrun, but what you're, I, I think the, the confusion here is that you're saying, well, if it's a necessary service, then they still have to provide, which is true. I, I agree with that, if it, if it's a statutory required, if it's a statutory required, required service, then yes, that's true. But we should not then put the budget in a situation where we know that if we start paying a person that is going to provide a necessary service, a higher wage, then that is necessarily going to put us in a situation where we're going to exceed the budget.
So does then the elected official do without that person? If, if in that, whether the elected official's right or wrong, someone has to make the decision, are we gonna hire this person at this rate? And I've been voted into office to make that decision, whether I'm right or wrong, where.
I don't think the question is.
Who does he, he or she share that with?
I don't think the question is whether or not they can hire that position, it's, can I hire this person at this rate of pay, or do I have to only offer this rate of pay?
What if I can't fill the position? I still, am I not responsible to provide? Well, I don't mean a particular, I'm, I'm trying to be a little, a little higher, higher up.
Can you fill the position?
Well, but he's been elected to make that decision.
I think you have to close the job after two days, okay, the job is closed after two days. I think.
I believe, didn't the H R person approve? Isn't there a letter that says that H R was, did you not give a letter of approval?
I just told her when she starts to please bring your I nine and information for her deposit, I did not approve, he had already given me a signed offer letter that he had presented her, and she had signed.
I think the one I, the blue sheet I seen showed.
And I wrote on there that I could not approve it over at that ring of day, I never approved it.
No, I mean, when you sent her the letter, did you not congratulate her that she had received?
No, I just said welcome, that's all I said, was welcome.
I, I just think it's, it's one of those things that we have to look at it in the context of, if you're offering somebody, it would be different if this was a part-time position, where we don't have a continuing thing where, I mean, this person is going to anticipate that they're gonna still have this job throughout the rest of the year. And so we can't budget assuming that, well, something will happen and it'll figure itself out, that's, that's not responsible budget, and I think that's what the commissioners are saying here. Is that we can't, we can't assume that, well, it'll, it'll sort itself out, we have to assume that this person is going to be hired to perform these duties that are statutorily required. As a statutorily required duty, we need to fund that, can we fund that under the current budget? If the answer is yes, then the county attorney is welcome to, to do that, if the answer is no, then we have to figure something out to make sure that that is funded.
But when in the year do you decide?
You sign it, you decide that every time.
And who makes that decision? Because everyone, all of the elects are equal, they're all put in.
I think the county attorney has to make the decision, is, is this within my budget? I think that question has to be asked.
And whether he's right or wrong, it's still his decision, is that correct?
But that doesn't hurt us, I'm, if it's wrong, and I believe it's wrong, I don't worry about it, so, that's the difference in their opinion.
Legally, I'm gonna say that's part of the political position.
Well, because he's not above me, and I'm not right here, and so if he thinks it's the right one, I go, then that's where they have to make their decisions.
Well, the voters don't get to vote on it.
In this case, I mean, we took this as voters, I think we could.
That's the way the state laws.
If we took a vote in this room, I think that we could, if that's a vote, but that's not the services, that, yeah, I don't.
Also with that, you know, we recently had an H R director who could work in coordination of elected offices, and when they work together, a partnership, and go through the process of the advertising, interviewing, hiring, all of that, working within whatever the pay rate is supposed to be, that's how our move to eliminate these issues. So in this case, I don't think that occurred.
That's the variable.
Is this one of the.
I said, if he wants to coordinate, I didn't have to, but if an elected official is coordinating, we can streamline the process, we can fully afford these issues, we do not force. I said, if you coordinate, if you choose to coordinate with the H R, I think for the county, it would be very beneficial to all the taxpayers to have a very well-run hiring process that takes into account the budgets, and we're offering a pay rate to whatever position I need. That is something we need.
And officially, sure, he did have with a full-blown high pay sale, and we looked at it and it made sense, and it's approved, so there's not any barriers there, it's, this pay sales period is within a budget, it's, so we'll see where that ends up here in the year. However, I'm talking about his, but again, we're talking about, how do you figure out five dollar gallon gas? I mean, those are the extenuating circumstances, but that doesn't mean you figure this year gas goes to two dollars a gallon, next year you still have a budget for five, so there's the, there's always the catch.
That's, that's where, over time, he's gonna, some years he's gonna go over, some years he's gonna get money back.
But that's why when we take a budget out, again, when I said it was at two point one million dollars, but that's what the spending out here for the numbers that it makes, when the spending was. One point eight, two point one, two point one, two point oh, and then, then two thousand point one, they spend reserves with two point five, but they were budgeting like one point five, one point seven, was that right? It was pretty high.
Yeah, so.
We defended the budget and they came way. We actually increased it at two point seven this year, so we put some stuff in there to make it so we, again, we're not here to starve, we're just here to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Commissioner, that one, you and I ran the office, I remember, I grew the highest tax count per cabinet in the state.
Oh, yes, I know.
We are looking to become more efficient and spend the taxpayers' money wisely, so there are going to be changes, and there's going to be accountability to budgets that maybe, I don't know, weren't taken attention to. So I feel like there's a fight with some of the elected officials who, who don't like that, that we're here to partner with the elected officials, we're not here to fight with you, but we do need to be accountable for the money that comes to us. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask questions and then tell people or ask them, here's the budget you asked for, we approved it, now you have to save it.
That comes back to the co-equal.
It's common sense.
The co-equals work both ways, I mean, they're co-equals, we're co-equals, I mean, I don't want to sit there and get told I have to do this because of this, because I don't think that's right. Now, if that is, I mean, legally it's wrong when somebody makes that decision, but I believe it's our job up here, is we have a budget, we ask them to stay within that budget, and reason, you have a conversation. But it can't be a conversation that just starts with, unfortunately, you're in a blowout, but you show up, that's not, then you're gonna have a conversation. And that's like, you'll do this, and we won't do this, so we can't do this, so I think that's the point that we're at, I think, is the commissioners, I don't, again, I haven't seen the blue sheet, that's what I'm across. So there's nothing that we can go down there, is that a conversation?
I believe that particular employee starts in a few days, and.
If he's wanting us to vote on that, then, because that's part of our policy, we're gonna be a cop officer. It's not a great path, I mean, that's how you target all the employees.
It's just.
I just mean, it might be unfair to the new employee to not.
I think there was an opportunity, there was an opportunity before this conversation happened, and that's why we're in this situation, is the policy of how things should occur, didn't, and now we're in this problem. When he came and asked for the assistant attorney, that was approved, right?
And we had a conversation, it's one we put out.
And then he wants this position that has been refilled, and now it's well-being, made up for litigation.
That was one of the reasons that the assistant attorney was there, because that's a good reason.
It, it seems so stark.
Well, I appreciate your time, and, and the conversation, thank you.
There's money in there.
I got that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have a public building, we're just covering up.
Yes, there's other stuff, can you come back, can you have to name, adjourn the publicity mission, is there a project in the fourth time, Commissioner, to finish that?
We recessed. All the other now is a time, I mean, we have time, because it's a public, you know, broadcast. We could say we're gonna come back at four thirty.
Well, maybe four thirty-five, we have a little bit.
Or a little bit earlier, some of these weekends. Bottoms out. It's normally one important public when you're back in session.
So that's what I'm saying, we recessed, say we're coming back at four thirty, maybe after recess for a longer. We don't have a term, we just recess.
I did, I just wanna make sure we inform the public.
Right, so I'll make, I'm, we recess until four thirty P M, and the commissioners will be to have the little bunch of room, go to the.
So this was, yes, and I got that, he wants, yeah, I'll say, that's okay with me, but he wants the gate shut off, okay, I will do that.
And then I have two o'clock.